Oh, yeah. I mean, I want to say we don't do valuable work. I've never.
It's some intentional ignorance.
Yeah.
Because there's people in the.
No, but.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start with changes to the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to move discussion of the Act 250 committee out of report and make it an actual discussion.
All right. So we'll make that item eight A.
Okay.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Then we'll move on. Public comment period. Anyone from the public is welcome to comment to the board on anything not on tonight's agenda. Seeing nobody, we'll move on again. Action on the consent agenda.
Move approval of the tip amendment and the winner tip amendment?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
That was Jeff and Jim.
Did you get that?
Jeff and Jim.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Approved minutes of January 15, 2020 meeting.
Move approval with any amendments from Catherine?
Okay. You saw her with paper in hand. But Jim had his hand up first.
I don't have it in front of me yet, so I can't give your line, but there was a discussion of the approval of, it's, the discussion is the approval of the Charlotte energy plan. The title talks about the approval of the Jericho.
Oh, that's why I have it as a biggie.
Did you pick that up? You could tell us what line it was?
It's on page three, line five.
I would hope that Jim would let Catherine go because she's probably going to cover everything that he's going to read.
But.
Catherine.
Yes, under Westford, it's listed as absent, but it's vacant. Because when we have the MPO vote, it was already listed as vacant.
Doesn't matter.
So we need to be consistent.
Yep.
And then, like I said, page three, line five, is the Jericho plan. And.
Oh, um, Westford has a rep now.
Ah.
But at the time, it was vacant.
But it, yeah, because you have vacant, well, then you, somehow it needs to be consistent because.
Page three.
Uh, the, both MPO votes were, uh, Westford was vacant.
All right.
Charge more for absence than vacant.
Make me their second alternate so I can wield those sorts of power.
I have another rather embarrassing one to talk about. My memory is that I was not at the meeting. However, the minutes say I was, and it also says that Charlotte voted.
Oh, yes.
So I'm not sure if the minutes are wrong or my memory is wrong.
Check the video.
But could you check the video?
Check the video. Was he here, Jim? I actually don't remember you being here.
I didn't know I was here, but the minutes say I was here, and there are votes for Charlotte in there, so, and Marty wasn't here either.
Yeah, I knew Marty wasn't here.
So something's off.
So.
And you're hoping it's not your brain.
Exactly.
The third alternate. I can have five of them. We'll just make the. Make the changes. Okay. So on that, Jim, if it's acceptable, everyone, they'll review the tape. If you weren't here, they'll take you off.
That's fine. If I am, please let me know so I can.
It's short-term memory loss, that's the issue.
To make you feel better, I'm sure there are other people here who can't remember if they're here or not. Okay, any other corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes with the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Whether you were here or not.
If you were here, you're going to vote.
You don't have to.
I know, I know.
You don't have to.
We got.
Barbara, I voted for you.
I know, I knew you did.
For Karen.
I knew you did.
And figure if I can get Rod to make a further amendment, and I can get two other peoples, I can be.
So we'll move on to item five after that wonderful discussion of the minutes. Christine, I guess you'll introduce this?
Yes, I will introduce this. So this is a major tip amendment on, so we'll require a public hearing on this in March. This is for a project that is on the tip right now. It's for signal upgrades in Shelburne and South Burlington on US 7. When we did the tip, we, we have an AID grant, Accelerated Innovation Deployment, $997,000 jointly C-CerP C and V-Trans. And I think since that time, V-Trans has agreed to supplement that with some additional funding so that they can do a more extensive signal project on Shelburne Road. So we're adding, it's about a $4 million project, so we're adding about $3 million of other funds and the $996 of AID funds. And the funds are available within C-CerP C's constraint limit, so your packet sort of lays this out, and I won't go into the details, I'll let V-Trans. So we have Taylor and Kelsey here from V-Trans who are going to give an overview of this project, tell you what it's all about, and get everyone excited.
For the record, this is the Shelburne reps' favorite project in our program.
And you believe that carries weight?
What it's worth. If you're wondering what the locals think, at least this one.
All right. Thanks, Christine. I'll, I'll get into it. So like Christine said, I'm Taylor Sisson. I'm the project manager with V-Trans. I'm joined by Kelsey Record, the lead design engineer with V-Trans. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit more about the Shelburne-South Burlington project for signal improvements on Shelburne Road. The project includes 17 signals, beginning with the Webster Road intersection where there's a jug handle and runs north all the way up to Swift Street intersection. Those 16 intersections are state-owned, and then we also are including some improvements at the 189 off-ramp signal that's owned and maintained by the city of Burlington.
You've been demoted to the TAC, to be in the TAC?
Oh, sorry.
Most of the other RPCs call their tracks.
No, I'm just saying.
Congratulations, Jim.
Yeah. So I'll just, I'll touch on the brief history of the project and the aid grant that Christine alluded to, show you a little bit more specifically where the project is located. The project is broken actually into two contracts, so I'll talk to you about those and the differences, talk about the benefits, and then if you guys have any questions for me at the end, I'll do my best to answer those. So the brief history of the project, the RPC in coordination with V-Trans applied for and was awarded a federal aid grant for traffic signal performance measures on Shelburne Road, so performance measures allowing V-Trans operations to basically operate our traffic signals with a little more information about how they're running and be able to make changes a little more frequently to the operation of signals. So V-Trans also had a project in scoping for additional improvements to the traffic signals on Shelburne Road in addition to the infrastructure kind of highlighted in that aid grant. So the two kind of efforts united, and we ended up developing two different contracts under the same project, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about the specifics of those two and why they're separated. So those, the projects were defined in October of 2019, and we've been cranking away on the design and plan development for those. So the aid grant, like Christine said, it was for almost a million dollars in federal funds with a 20% state match. And again, it was based around, you know, improving the signals on Shelburne Road and adding some additional signal infrastructure needed to generate performance measures for the signals. So that equipment that we would need to add to the signals included establishing communications. So there's a fiber communications line that ties into the Webster Road intersection currently. So we would need some additional infrastructure to basically tie into that, allowing our operations folks to access the signals remotely, to be able to make changes, you know, from their offices or wherever. In addition to that, we will be adding some Bluetooth equipment to give us additional information on, you know, the trip times along Shelburne Road and provide a little more information on how the signals are running out there. Advanced detection equip, equipment, so that, that equipment ties into the traffic signal and, you know, we're able to, is needed to, to generate some of those performance measures. Cameras at the intersections, those are just to, you know, if there's something, you know, a signal in flash or something that seems to, you know, we've gotten complaints about how a signal is running, cameras would allow our operations staff to, you know, look at what's going on real time at a certain intersection to help them kind of evaluate what's needed as a fix. And then new traffic signal cabinets and controllers, the newest controllers and cabinets out there. The newest project that, that replaced anything was, you know, from Webster Road up to IDX Holmes Ave. So those 10 intersections are a little bit more modern than some of the other intersections on Shelburne Road, but they're still, were constructed in 2005, 2006. So the aid grant would be to help update some of those, too. So here, here's the Shelburne Road corridor that I've been referring to. So at the bottom of the screen is the Webster Road intersection. The MS numbers on there are how our operations team refers to the different maintenance signals. So those 17 signals are kind of what I have, the, the bubbles drawn around. So again, the first contract of the project is from Webster Road, MS 511 down at the bottom, all the way north to MS 517, which is the IDX Drive signal. And then Contract Two, the second part of the project, is from McIntosh Ave Fayette Drive intersection up to Swift Street. Those six are state-owned and operated signals. And then at the very top of that edge of that bubble is the I-89 off-ramp, which again is the city of Burlington's that we have some more minor improvements to as well. So again, just zoomed in on the Contract One part of the project, and you can see the intersections that that project includes from Webster Road to IDX. So some of the additional work that V-Trans wanted to do as part of this project, in addition to what was specified by, the equipment specified in the aid grant, is to, so those, as I said before, those intersections were built 2005, 2006. As you guys probably all know, they're the more up-to-date mast arm setup signals, so, you know, the big black poles that you see out there, which is kind of our going standard right now for, for signal infrastructure. So that, that part of the infrastructure is already there, but we would, as part of this project, be replacing the signal heads that exist today, and that includes for the left turn movements, replacing the currently protected-only, you know, green arrow signal heads with flashing yellow arrows that you see around Chittenden County. And then in addition, replacing the stop bar detection that's out there, replacing emergency preemption equipment that exists today, but kind of all of this equipment is getting close to the end of its useful life, so, you know, we're essentially replacing in kind, but updating pedestrian signal equipment for the crosswalks that are out there we'll be replacing. And then we'll be adding some infrastructure for connected vehicle capability, so the new traffic signal cabinets and controllers that we'll be installing. We'll also be adding some equipment to basically make the signals connected vehicle ready, and, and that infrastructure will tie into the new controllers. So here's the, a little bit more of the overview about Contract One. So our construction estimate for Contract One was $1.9 million, and we just recently received bids, and the apparent low bidder came in at 1.94 million, so pretty close there. And then the schedule for the project would be hopefully to begin construction sometime in the middle or end of June, and the completion date for Contract One would be this coming So Contract Two, the reason we split out this project into two contracts, the big reason is that the six signals that the state owns from McIntosh to Swift Street are much older than the other 10 signals that are part of the signal corridor. I think the oldest signal, and these were all kind of installed here and there throughout time, so I think the oldest signal out there was installed in like 1971, and then they kind of vary in age. I think maybe the, the most recent one was like 1995 or something. So those signals are, are also, you know, definitely getting towards the end of their, their useful life, and, and all, all six of those are also the older span wire equipment. I'll, I have a slide a little later on that, that kind of shows a side-by-side. So, you know, our intent is to replace those span wires with the updated mast arm signal equipment that, you know, we've been installing throughout the state. So again, McIntosh to Swift Street are the state signals, and then we'll be making some more minor improvements to the I-89 off-ramp. So I'll touch on a little bit more on that. So essentially, Contract Two includes the same equipment that Contract One did, with just the, the major difference being that, you know, we would be doing a full replacement of the signal infrastructure and, you know, in replacing the, the span wire systems that exist today with mast arm poles, and then everything else that comes with it, the new signal heads, flashing yellow arrows for left turns, new stop bar detection, preemption equipment, ped crossing equipment, and also the connected vehicle capability, in addition to the infrastructure that I kind of talked about with the aid grant. Yes.
Is there going to be much disruption, traffic patterns and things like that to do this? Because I noticed that it's going to be happening right in the middle of the summer.
Yeah, and it's definitely, you know, a busy place in the state, so we're planning on the work to, to happen at night, to try to cut down on, on impacts during the day out there. And that, we're planning on doing that for Contract One as well. So Contract One, because it's, you know, not quite as major work, should have pretty limited impact to, to the public traveling. Contract Two will have more, obviously, because it's much more involved, but we're planning on that being night work.
Well, Chris will get beat up for that. I just wanted, didn't want John to get beat up for his favorite product.
Men with ladders in the middle of the day.
Down Shelburne Road? Yeah, no problem.
So again, this is, kind of shows a little bit of the, the difference in the signal infrastructure that would, that we would be installing as part of Contract Two. So on the left, the span So on the left, the span wire strain pole signal setup is is what's out there from McIntosh to Swift Street. So we would be replacing that type of signal infrastructure with the mast arms and more modernized signal infrastructure that's on the right there.
What are the Ethernet radios?
So the Ethernet radios are the equipment needed to basically patch through, like, the fiber remote communications aspect. So in order to, for our operations folks to, you know, be able to remotely connect to, say, Swift Street, there won't be like a hard connection in to communications, but we'll, you know, still be able to have that access remotely.
Sure. Just wanted to know if there was sort of a live picture where they, like this morning 2A, and, you know, had a issue at the exit southbound on 14, 12, I think it was.
Okay.
And I wondered if that would pop up as an error or something in your systems.
Yes, so we do have like a software that any signals we have remote communications to, our operations group can like set up different alerts for. So, you know, if there's like a signal and flash or some detection that's not working properly, they would get through the software, you know, some kind of alert. It can be a text message or an email that would, you know, basically hint them to check it out and, you know, dispatch any of our signal technicians if needed to fix something in the field.
And that doesn't exist on these 16 intersections?
Not currently. And that, that's one of the biggest things that we're, we're adding as part of this project. Yeah.
Just curious if, I don't know if the technology exists today or not, but should. Power outage just, what, last week in Essex Junction, five corners, maybe a week and a half ago. The SXP had to show up because there's no lights, traffic lights. And I've seen it all around Chittenden County at different times. Is there a way to have a battery back? I mean, people have gas generators at businesses where it kicks in, and at least for that, I mean, when you think about the tying up emergency staff and the risk for accidents, injuries, fatalities, whatever, is there something they can put in that if there is a power outage, almost instantaneously, the the power reserve or something generating power kicks in and takes over?
Yeah. So we do have that at a couple signals throughout the state, but all of our new signals have, you know, we, our techs have backup generators that they carry around with them that they, you know, so we wouldn't have a generator onsite at all of these, but they they do have, you know, a hookup to get, if if the power were to go out, to be able to run the signal until they can get it back up.
Do they have to show up with the generator and kind of plug it in?
They do, yep, yep. So one of our signals, you know, is is a, a problem child frequently, and that one does have a generator at it. And I think, I think, I think we have a couple that do have like a permanent generator, but for the most part, these, these won't.
Yeah, that's all right.
You talked a lot about how it'll help you communicate and understand what's going on and all. Can you talk at all about improvements in traffic flow?
Yep.
I, I think that's the, the point that most people, I mean, all that internal stuff is great for you guys, and you need it, and it's good stuff, don't get me wrong.
Yep.
But the public is only going to understand whether or not it, it helps the traffic flow.
Yeah, and and they, they definitely are, they definitely are connected. So, you know, the, the main goal of the aid grant specifically is to establish these automated traffic signal performance measures. Right now, the way that our signals are kind of operated are, you know, we get traffic data once a year at certain places, and our operations staff is basically using that and coming up with their best take on what the signal should be running based on, you know, one, one day of the year. With some of this additional infrastructure and the outputs of the performance measures, they'll basically be able to have all that data all the time. So, you know, they'll, they'll be able to make more tweaks and be able to respond, you know, kind of in adapting to what traffic is doing at different times. So it definitely, this infrastructure should help with with how things flow out there.
Is there any technology to prevent a cycle when nobody needs it? So if you've got a, right now, a lot of our signals, you know, it's four-way, and if there's nobody sitting there on one of the way, everybody else is stopping, waiting for nobody. My understanding is the smarter signals will understand that there's nobody there, and it will override itself so that it keeps the main line running rather than letting it bog up. Is that part of this as well?
Yes, it is. And then that's the, the biggest part that kind of speaks to that is the upgraded vehicle detection. So we've been, we've been using radar detection on, on our signals, which has proven to be pretty accurate. Our operations folks say that it's, has been about 97% accurate, which is pretty darn good. And, you know, that, that would basically, as long as no cars there, and there are cars in, on other legs of the intersection, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't serve that, that leg unless there was something else, you know, in the controller that we had a reason to, to keep in there.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I just remind everybody that that's one of the most effective climate change carbon tools that we have in our box. Cars sitting there idling, waiting for no reason whatsoever are a big source of carbon we don't need. So it's not just traffic flow that you can get there a little faster, it's, it's actually doing that creates a lot.
Yep.
And while we're on that topic, the way that the advanced radar detection, saying 97% accurate, if you have, I think one of the nuisances for a lot of the bike riders is that they don't get picked up. And if you could address that, then secondarily, if there's, well, I'll, I'll think of it if you answer that question. I forgot.
Yeah, so unfortunately, the, the, there's not a lot of information as far as like the, the radar being able to, to pick up bikes. So I, I can't speak to that too much.
The other item was that, is it?
What's that?
That'll still be like a push button actuation for the pad bike?
Yeah, so.
They can wave their arm or something?
With a metal glove?
Yeah. So, you know, staying, staying on the road, they would, you know, act like a regular vehicle. If they're crossing as a pedestrian, that, you know, will have the, the replaced pedestrian crosswalks out there, so, you know.
A lot of avid bike riders, and, you know, more so in the summer months, and I think they're looking for these kind of things, that they're treated like a vehicle on the road.
Yeah.
As they are. But as far as the adjustments, the traffic monitoring, like the signal timing remotely, I didn't get whether it was happening through an AI process, or whether it was manual in real time, or whether it was a batch process, let's look at what's happening data-wise, and every two, three weeks, we might go in and adjust things.
Yeah.
Any speak for that?
It's a little bit of a hybrid, so, you know, without going like too far into the weeds.
I'll make, I'll make.
There, there is, you know, some programming you can do within the signal controller to, to help kind of adapt to changes in traffic volumes throughout the day. But for the most part, it's, you know, it, it needs to be entered manually by our operations staff first. So the legwork would happen kind of upfront, and, you know, they would just be able to build more kind of signal controller programming into these, these with the more information that they would now have from some of these performance measures.
Do you see a, a future where you could camp on an AI that could adjust more in real time?
Um, yeah.
With the existing data that you'd be collecting and?
Yep. And, and there are, there are some products that exist that do do a little bit more of that, but they, they basically operate the same way. It's, it's, you still need to kind of do the, the work upfront to kind of build in the parameters of, you know, how long you want your traffic signal cycles to be, and, you know, based on what, and, you know, how much it can adjust, you know, with the variation in traffic.
On that note, when, are we at the point where we have the technology to, for the signals to understand the queues of cars coming at them? So for instance, if you had a queue of 12 cars that were approaching, and you're halfway through it, rather than cutting four of them off with a large brake behind them, it would, you know, stay green an extra six seconds to allow the whole queue to run through, so that, again, so it wouldn't have to stop the traffic. Because right now, all these, a lot of those signals, if you've got anybody entering from the sides, the side gets priority. Soon as a car shows up, bang, everything turns red, and that guy gets to go, no matter what the conditions around them are. Have we got anything in this that sort of solves that problem?
So this is actually because of how the signals are kind of spaced and how closely together they are on Shelburne Road, they are timed to be a corridor that, that works together, and with the priority being, you know, Route 7, because that's where the majority of traffic is. So the timing and the programming that's in there and that will be in there with this project, too, does, is supposed to favor mainline traffic. And kind of, this is kind of similar to the, to the same line that Chris just, just asked There, there is some play with the, with the timing and operation that, you know, allows some of the, some of that adjustment to keep, you know, slugs of cars together and moving on green, but it is kind of how it's set up to begin with.
All right, so it, it's not smart enough to do it on its own. Like, on this one, you know, you got the timing, but on this one trip, oh, it looks like I need to stay green for three extra seconds, and it would just trip itself that one time and then go back to the original time. We haven't reached the point where the signals could do that yet.
It's close with, with the detection that's out there, but it still needs like some manual input ahead of time to, to try to get that to happen. Yeah, no, no system is perfect.
I understand. I just was wondering where we were in the technology.
Yeah.
And, and that gives that.
Yep.
And I know, once you get to the whole smart thing, and then everybody talking to each other, it becomes a whole different animal in terms of how they can coordinate, but, but right now, I wasn't sure if the radar had the ability to do that.
Yeah, it aids in that, I guess, is, is what I'll say, yeah, yeah.
Fair enough.
So I probably, I probably covered most of the, the benefits on here, you know, the, the big thing being a lot more data for our operations staff to use to, to hopefully, you know, keep tabs on how the system is running and be able to make tweaks remotely if there is a need to alert any signal technicians that would need to respond if there were a power outage or a signal and flash that, you know, couldn't be addressed remotely. Gathering those performance measures, things like, you know, arrivals on red, how many cars are, you know, showing up to a signal when it's red, and trying to, you know, not do that as much as possible. You don't want to show up on green and, and keep moving. And other performance measures kind of on that line. And, you know, a big one, that's, that's a little less on the aid grant part of the work, is replacing just some of the, the old signal equipment that's out there that's getting towards the end of its useful life. Improved signal coordination, we just kind of talked about a little bit. And then with the flashing yellow arrows, reducing delays for, for left turners. And so the, the Contract Two, because again, it's, it was a, it's a more in-depth design and has, you know, some other project constraints to, for us to kind of think about and design around, we separated it from Contract One, just to be able to kind of keep them both moving quickly. And so that the, our, our estimated cost for Contract Two for construction right now is around 2.3 million. We're currently in our preliminary plan design phase with final plans. We're hoping to have final plans done in April, and then advertising at the end of June. Because of the lead times that a lot of the signal equipment require for, you know, delivery onsite to contractors, we would be looking at a summer of 2021 for a construction season.
None of its source in China, is it?
Well, the equipment's sourced in China.
No, by, by America. Just wondering. So I think that pretty much sums it up for me, unless you have any other questions that I haven't gotten to? Yeah?
I'm not sure if I missed it, but right now, they are coordinated in your Phase One.
Yep.
Which are not coordinating with Phase Two. When this is done, will they all be coordinated as one system?
They will, yep, yep.
And I, I would like to reiterate, if there's any way that you can find how to improve detection for bicycles, I think that's really important, because more and more bicycles are on Route 7 with those lanes.
Yep.
And you do have the detector down at Webster Road, so there's at least one there.
Yep.
More of them if the radar isn't working, I think would be great for the entire quarter. Because that, that is an issue, and you get bicycles sort of on the side streets. Usually it's not, not Route 7, because they're getting that green pretty quickly. But if they're, if they're sitting on the side and they're not detected, they sit there forever.
Yeah.
And then that induces not good bicycle behavior.
Hmm.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So why did you define the quarter where you stop? So for example, if you just go another quarter mile, there's another half dozen lights in front of all the shopping stores through there and the.
Yep.
So why didn't you continue and just, and just solve that entire, the entire area? Because you're going to stop on one side of 89, 189, and the other side's going to have another half dozen lights.
Yeah, so those signals from 189 north into Burlington are owned and operated by, by the city of Burlington. So, you know, we, we're, the work is.
That's where the state long at.
Yep, yep. And, you know, I, I did mention, and maybe I kind of breezed over it, you know, the, the 189 signal is also the city of Burlington's, but we are planning to replace the signal controller and cabinet at that intersection and add some, some new detection there, with the thought being that, you know, that's a, a major generator of traffic down on both, you know, the Burlington's signal system, but also, you know, the state's owned and operated signals south of that, that are, that are included in the project.
So, so that, with any kind of coordination, then with the Burlington ones, once you're complete, are the systems that different that they can't coordinate?
Um, so we, we actually met with, with, with the signal operations engineer for the city of Burlington a few weeks ago, just to kind of talk about how, you know, the system will, will operate from, in the future, and, you know, with, with the state being able to collect, you know, some information on that signal, we're, we're trying to work out a way with them to be able to kind of share that information, particularly at that signal that's, that's owned by Burlington.
Thanks.
Yep.
That's, that's Class One road all throughout?
That's Class One, yep, yep.
Mr. Chair, I move we warn a public hearing on this major tip amendment for the March 18th meeting, ACCRPC.
Okay. Second? Second by Dan. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay.
Christine, for that, for that meeting, can we, and I'm sure you probably, I hope you know this, can we understand what available fiscal constraint that we have after we went approve this amendment going forward? Because I was surprised that almost three, we had $3 million that were easily available under a fiscal constraint.
Right. Can I?
Yeah, just for the, for the, for the hearing.
So the, one of the consent agenda items you approved was, was a reduction in cost of the payment project, because the treatment has been changed.
Yeah, no, I, I know things are moving parts of, I just would like to know, after we approve this, how much fiscal constraint do we have available to us?
Okay.
Okay. Yeah? All set? All set? Okay. Yeah? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item. Oh, everyone's favorite, safety performance targets.
Mr. Chair, we litigated this last year. I know. We have to redo it.
You could, you could, you should.
I, I will be really fast, so I, I don't have a presentation. I'm just, so you have a memo in your pocket discussing the safety performance. a memo in your packet discussing the safety performance targets. And, you know, so as the memo indicates, you know, FHWA and FTA, FTA, they develop performance measures in specific categories.
Um, no. I, it's clear. We're not going to do anything. I'm, I'm just going to move that we accept it.
Why don't we let her finish?
I promise you, it's not going to take more than that.
Well, I don't know what Sacony and Donovan and Shaw are going to do on questions. So I wanted to get the motion out.
Apparently you want to get to a debate or something.
Hi.
That's at nine o'clock.
We remember that you want to make a motion, so.
Well, I'm, I'm raising my hand. I'm not even blurting and you're giving me crap.
Okay. So I will be faster. So let's, let's do this. So, you know, so basically, you know, so safety is one of the categories. And we were here back in 2018 on this board, and this board, it basically accepted the statewide targets. And we are actually, the recommendation of the executive committee, of the TAC, and all of the staff is to do the same for the 2020 targets, for calendar year 2020. So you see the, the table there, you see the targets. We also put some several factors for you to consider, you know, to basically why we are recommending what we're recommending, which is to accept the statewide targets. And just one more thing, and I will just stop, is that we provided a number of graphs for you that has both the statewide as well as the, the regional crash data that we are looking at. The only thing that I have to say is that, that one, the red line that you see, which is our, basically our target line, because it wasn't really just, the data was not put in the spreadsheet. When we transferred that graph from the spreadsheet to the PowerPoint, that basically red line was not in the right place. But now we have it in the right place. That's all. I have to just make a point on that, and I'm going to stop.
Jeff.
I would, I would move we accept the TAC Executive Committee and the recommendation for the safety performance targets for our MPO as specified.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Second by Jim.
I'm persuaded by all the comments from the TAC and everything that, you know, it's just easier for us to do this than tire ourselves a nut.
Any comments from anyone else? Yeah, Garrett.
I'd rather see red wine than red line.
Okay.
Any other comments? We appreciate that from a member from Beulah's Gore.
Who doesn't get a vote anyway?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
You can still make thoughtful comments, Garrett.
Thank you.
So I guess Christine, opposed Vtrans Capital Program projects?
So this is another, just really brief item that I wanted to. So I just, so the, the state federal fiscal, the state fiscal year 2021 capital program has been recently released and submitted to the legislature. State fiscal year 2021 begins July 1st, 2020, ends June 30th, 2021. This is the recommended budget as presented to the legislature. So just a real quick overview of what's in it for us. First, just in a review, a couple, in a couple of months, we're going to be talking about the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP. So this is the capital program, to just, to lay out the differences between these two, because they're both really important documents. But the capital program is the state's budget. We all know that. It lists all the projects, programs that Vtrans is going to work on in the current budget year and then the next three years, developed by Vtrans, approved by the legislature. The TIP is a federal document required by FHWA, includes the federal funds spent on transportation projects. Capital program is really a budget document. It's what's going to be spent. TIP's a little bit more of a planning document, what we're planning to do, looking out into the future. Capital program has all the transportation projects. The TIP has federally funded projects. Selection of projects is based on a prioritization process, and we'll be talking about that next month. RPCs and Vtrans all score projects, and that fits, works, fits into what moves forward in what order. And, yeah. And both documents, projects, for us, the project has to be in both documents in order to be built. So in your packet is a table that lists all the projects in Chittenden County. I just wanted to be clear about what this is. So the capital program includes a lot of stuff, a total of about $641 million. And what we're talking about, and that's for the FY twenty, FY 21 year, what I'm really talking about is these nine programs that are listed up here, paving, interstate bridge, state bridge, town highway bridge, roadway, traffic and safety, park and ride, bike and ped facilities, and transportation alternatives. And these are the places where projects live that we care about. So just to be clear, this is about half of the budget, about 300, 300 million. The other money goes to like Department of Motor Vehicles, to maintenance, some town highway programs, a variety of other programs, and to fund the Policy and Planning Division. So what we're looking at this table, the Vtrans funding level is in the first number column. So just to, when we do this comparison, just to make sure we're being honest about it, there's a number of things in each program that are statewide things. Line striping, you know, I don't know what else.
Sign projects.
Sign projects that kind of go everywhere.
Rumble stripe.
So in order to really look at what Chittenden County gets, based on what, what goes to the state, we slip, we, we subtracted all of those items. So what we see at the end of the day is that Chittenden County is getting about 19%, 19.4% of the, of the budget in these programs. Do we care about that? Maybe. But this table also shows the funding history of Chittenden County projects. Over the past 10 years, we've gotten about 15.2%. I think kind of the story that we're interested in saying is that Chittenden County is not getting all the money. We're getting money. We're getting a lot of projects. It's good. But, you know, we're not getting like a huge slug of projects.
So FY 05 and 06, that was CERC funding?
Yeah. That was, that was when we did like Kennedy Drive, Lime Kiln Bridge, Shelburne Road.
This is actual capital expenditures.
Okay. So, so when we gave all the money back, that wasn't part of our allocation? Okay.
No. That, that would not have been in here because it.
Gosh, Kennedy Drive was that far back? Holy.
I know, right?
[inaudible].
Yeah.
Well, that's why we're replacing the signals from when we did that.
Yeah. So, so that is the, so another point, just to, when we're talking about the capital program, is we talk about, we use these three terms talking about the capital program, front of the book, D and E, and candidate list. What that really just means, the front of the book projects have, are literally in the front of the book, and they have a budget page, they have, they have a spending profile, they have information, they have just a, a description of how they are going to move forward. The D and E list is, list are projects that are approved by the legislature. Vtrans is committed to delivering these projects, but, and they're, they're expected to have designer right-of-way expenditures during the budget year. But they don't really have a construction date that's determined specifically. And then the candidate list are projects that are the next to advance. So Chittenden County projects, this list is in your packet. If you have any specific questions about specific projects, we can talk about them, or I can send those questions to Vtrans. But a bunch of projects in a bunch of categories. We have the funding totals. And those totals are just the one year, the one year funding amounts. We have three projects on the D and E list, 16 projects on the candidate list. And just finishing up, just to give a snapshot of the status of the CERC alternatives, for those who are still tracking these projects. So we've completed four CERC alternative projects. The 2A 289 intersection, interchange in Essex, Pearl Street improvements in Essex Junction, 2A James John Drive will be finished this year, and signal upgrade grades on 2A and 15. And then the remaining Phase One projects are all in the front of the book, all construction expected in the next couple of years. The Phase Two, all of the Phase Two projects are in the front of the book with expected construction during the four-year Severance Corner is the farthest one out. And then Phase Three projects, five of them are front of the book projects, and they are advancing. I guess I should say, Susie Wilson Road project has been split. That was a corridor and a couple of intersection projects. So what's in the capital program right now is just the Susie Wilson Vermont 15 intersection, and the others will move after that. And then D and E, the 2A improvements in Colchester and exit 12 are D and E. And then the remaining five CERC alternative projects are candidates.
Christine Waters.
Sitting there.
Going to be uncharacteristically quiet.
Yeah. But we know what you're thinking.
I know how you feel.
All right. That's it.
Questions? Cummins?
Thanks.
And if you, if you have, if you see and have questions on any of these, anytime, just email me.
Go to Clean Water Service Provider.
Clean Water Service Provider. So, yes. Attached, the, I'll apologize to you for attaching the full RFP as if you were going to respond to it. And all the, and responsiveness summary from A and R. But I just wanted, if you were curious and wanted to dig in a little deeper, I wanted to, you know, be able to do that. And, you know, I think I want to take some questions, if you have any. But just to update you about the, the discussion and the process so far. And I apologize for not being here last month. I know you talked about this for a few minutes last month. We held a meeting with Basin, with our partners in Basin Five, which is the direct-to-lake. It kind of includes Lewis Creek, Shelburne, Charlotte, Heinsberg. And, and then it goes, you know, into Burlington, excludes the Winuski River, but then widens out again, Colchester, some of Milton. It goes up into Georgia, St. Albans, Swanton, in Franklin County, includes all of Grand Isle County. And so yesterday, we had a meeting with all the partners in that basin. The biggest objective I had was to find out if there's somebody else that really wants to do this, in which case we could step back and say, have fun. But no one, everybody kind of stepped back from the table. And so, and, you know, and honestly, Dan and I really, no one else is really paying as close attention to this as, as we are. And so we really led the conversation and wanted to get everybody up to speed and just make sure everybody was understanding what the state was asking, and really the need for us all to work together as partners in that basin. And so I think we had a good conversation. I think there's support for us being an applicant here. So we kind of left that conversation with, for that basin, we would start, subject to feedback, but we would start to kind of drafting what a proposal might look like, how we'd work with the partners in that basin, and, and support the, those partners doing good natural resource projects to address the water quality gap. And just to refresh your mind, this is all to address the gap that A and R's identified we're not going to achieve our clean water goals just through the regulatory programs. And there's going to be a gap. So they need people to voluntarily take on projects. So they're using this system to put on, put money on the table to incentivize that behavior. So that's a quick update as to where that is. Happy to go into a deeper discussion, either about what the state's trying to achieve, how the whole process works, or how the meeting yesterday.
No showstoppers yet?
No. You know, and the other part of the conversation, I think, is really the rules and guidance and, you know, how will it actually work? DEC invited both Dan and I to participate in an advisory group that is helping them develop the guidance for this. So far, it all seems workable. And, you know, and there's a reason that the secretary initially proposed RPC with a lot of state and federal grants. And so it.
We're good at coefficient math. So when, when we do, when we do something, we can plug in a coefficient and then through the coefficient math, determine that we're complying.
Yeah. Natural resources major.
Yeah.
But, but I think.
Well, if that, if that schematic changes, then we got something to talk about as a group.
Yeah. And I think we kind of talked yesterday about whoever the provider is, is staffing the clean water, the basin water quality council, and really providing, similar to the transportation discussion that we have, you know, mostly at the TAC table, like reviewing the projects that are proposed in the basin. And hopefully DEC is developing the tools to be able to score them in a consistent way.
But how, how else can you do it but through coefficient math? Because otherwise, you'd have to try to take samples and then make attributions.
Yeah.
And value judgments between all the other things that are going on.
It's all esti, yeah, it's all estimated phosphorus pollution reductions. And DEC is coming up with the tools to estimate different kinds of projects.
Well, as long as they don't set the goals unrealistically.
Yeah.
That kind of thing. I think we're obviously a group that should be involved. This is consistent with our vision of the world.
And we did have, you know, this, this basin also is heavily MS4. So the towns that we've been supporting for 15 years with MS4 programming, you know, are very interested in making sure that this process works to maintain the flow of grant funds. Because one of the hooks the legislature put in this was that if the basin council and the provider aren't performing sufficiently, that will stop the flow of grant money to municipalities in that basin. So they're keenly interested in making sure that works.
So Dan can hold his nose and understand that we're still contributing.
Oh, yeah.
So we pick up St. Albans in that, in that process?
Yeah, right. Yeah. So they were at the table?
City and town. And then today, there was a meeting about the LaMoya Basin, and also mostly all RPC staff there. And Northwest RPC will probably take the lead role in that. But again, we'll be partnering in, similar to the meeting yesterday, Northwest RPC will play a strong role in quote-unquote "our" proposal, because there will be a lot of administrative, even if it's just project management. Running the meetings is one thing, but in theory, there'll be several projects coming through, flowing through that we need to administer, while the watershed groups or the conservation districts actually physically do the projects on the ground.
So you're getting the same kind of feedback from all the basins that, that's really RPCs who are going to be taking the lead? Statewide, the, the conversation amongst my peers has been, if somebody isn't really willing to step up, that we would, you know, probably help the state. Yeah. Do this.
Central Vermont looking at the Winuski Basin then?
Yeah. That meeting is coming up like March 10th, 11th, somewhere that time.
They rescheduled actually till later in March due to some conflicts. But Central Vermont RPC is organizing that. And, yeah, we'll be there at the table and other RPCs as well, too. That's quite a big drainage. So.
So you said, you say in Basin Five, that the Broad Lake, that Northwest was there? What about Mississauga? Because I think the conversation.
Seven basin.
Right. But the conversation I think we had earlier was that they were probably going to take the lead on that.
Take the lead on that one.
And just be a support group for the Basin Five or?
Right.
Correct. Yeah.
Right. And they actually had their partner meeting in Mississauga. That's, there's fewer players in that basin. Garrett?
Last time when we talked last month, there was mention of kind of, you have to vote on it before you read it situation, to coin a phrase of, you know, not knowing what the rules were. Is there any increased comfort level on that yet?
Um.
Or increased concern?
No, as I mentioned, you know, unfortunately, I think DEC is trying to be very open as they develop the rules. So they ask us to participate, and a bunch of other folks from conservation districts and watershed groups and, and a few other groups. So I think, you know, as it goes on, I think we're getting a little bit more comfortable with the guidance, you know, partly because we're able to sit at the table and, you know.
Write your own rules.
Only estimate one's thing so far. Because, you know, at the end, we need.
Get better than that.
What's that?
Write your own rules, subject to a referee.
I wouldn't go that far.
Well, subject to a referee.
Yeah. But DEC, I think, you know, like one of the interesting things we got into last week was the notion of conflict of interest. And like, is this a concern, or how would there be? Right. But, but yet, obviously, every partner around the table may have projects. But, but yet, obviously, every partner around the table may have projects that they'd like to see get funded, that, you know, have to get evaluated. And we're kind of used to dealing with that. It's not different than conversations we have around this table where municipalities all have projects, or we just had the work program meeting earlier. Not, not everybody sitting around the table, but a lot of the people sitting around the table had projects in the mix, that we're kind of used to having those conversations and saying, it's not a conflict, you're not personally benefiting, but everybody has an interest in it working. And so we're kind of working through what the guidance is on that, but, but that's been like one rub, but I think we're trying to promote the notion of partnership in all this, like, this is really going to work best when we're all, you know, moving well together.
When you're seeing the conflict, Charlie, you're seeing like communities, you know, for the funding, for the, you know, to deal with the project, whatever they're going to do, but isn't there are metrics out there that you have to meet this, this, and this, and there's grading, just as we do with, with the tip or anything, that, you know, this is how we grade these projects, so that, you know, you're, you're next on the list? You gotta...
Yeah, we really want to invest in the things that get us the most phosphorus reduction per dollar, right? So, yeah, so I think knowing that, and I think we'll talk more about how that will work at that group, that, that will resolve some of the issues right now. People, some people around the table are used to a more subjective selection process in some of the grant programs where they've had concerns like that, so, yeah, we're, we're working through it, I guess, to answer your question.
Just was good to hear about conflict.
Yeah, yeah. Other questions, comments? We will keep you posted. And so just, I think I mentioned at the bottom of the memo here, this, they moved the deadline. I feel like the top of the RFP is now May 8. Probably at your April meeting, we'll need kind of a, you know, the go-no-go vote on that. We'll have another update in March though. Yeah, and maybe with, wherever we are in terms of the drafting, we may know a little bit more, and the, and the guidance. Okay, thank you for that.
Chair Executive Director report.
Act 250.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. I didn't highlight it. Act 250. Sorry, Jim.
So note what was in your packet as an interesting historical document. Here's the latest draft out of the, after, we had the ad hoc committee on Act 250 met yesterday morning? Was that just yesterday?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm looking at Jim and Chris, who were both active participants in that discussion. And I'm not expecting you to read this. This is edited after yesterday's meeting. Yeah, yes, you're, you're thanking the right person. Thank Regina. And I'm not going to expect you to read all this and...
Did something move out of committee today, I heard?
Last Thursday, it got out of House Natural Resources. I think it was in, maybe Ways and Means today? It might have gone through one of the other House committees today.
That's where, that hit the development blog, blogosphere. Something moved.
Yeah, yeah. But in general, I think the committee wanted to at least have a little conversation, just, I don't know, about some of the reality of the process and the sausage-making, and how we respond, react, comment in that process. I don't know, maybe, I don't know, Jim, if you have better words than I'm about to use, but...
Well, I think, a great example of that was we met, we made some tentative comments. We were thinking about how we wanted to do them, whether we wanted to put them together. We finally got them organized. We were going to bring them to the provision for approval, and then Charlie got called in because they wanted to move it quickly, and he had to go and testify before it got approved by anybody. So he went with his best guess based on what we said, but even what he was commenting on had already changed from what we had reviewed, so that it just keeps changing on a weekly basis, and it becomes really difficult for us to formulate one of these, pass it through all the channels for approval, get it to you, and get it approved. By that time, this particular bill is gone. So I guess the question is, are you comfortable with Charlie making testimony based on what our smaller task force is saying, based on what we know about what everybody here is thinking? And if so, we want to move on. Charlie was thinking, well, we'll talk about that. Chris and I, in particular, felt we really needed to bring it to the board and actually present it to everybody, and make sure that you're all comfortable with that procedure. We are. We want to make sure that everybody else, so maybe it might be a motion, they guess...
Or a sense of the board?
A sense of the board or something.
Just a sense of the board, I think.
So that we know that the board is behind us and behind Charlie as he goes and does these things.
So is everyone okay with that? Anyone have an issue with that?
Raise your hands.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
Yeah, does anyone have a problem? If no one says anything, then we're going to assume everyone's fine with it.
Go forth.
That's what we wanted to know.
Only way you can do business.
Yeah.
And, and you guys were pointing to that ad hoc committee for a reason, right?
I guess.
Yeah, and, yeah, to be honest, yeah, I mean, and I think it's even challenging, because that group has just been meeting monthly, as, as you are, they're just a little off-cycle. So, and the reality is, I'm going to be using the board, that committee, the executive committee, whoever I'm in front of at a time to just bounce off as things are changing.
Can I just ask an informational question? How are we liaising with our member municipalities? Is it just coming through board members, or are we reaching out to our member municipalities?
The, well, at, at one level, yeah, I mean, define municipality.
Select boards.
No, no, no.
Legislative bodies.
So we had a meeting with the planners, so we heard, you know, from them, if not, yeah, I don't, I don't know the best way to get some select board feedback.
Leave it up to us to go to our select board or managers.
You know, I'm a firm believer in this, if you, if you, if you don't want something, don't ask, okay? But we should, I think, as a municipal service organization, we should be keeping managers or administrators and board chairs apprised of what we're doing, and tell them that it's happening fast, even if we're only emailing them. Just think we need to reach out.
And what I do see, am I trying to bounce off, like, hey?
I know, I know you do, but I, I want something, I, I think we need something structured, so that if we get to the situation where something contentious happens, we at least have a good sense of where our member municipalities are for consideration by our ad hoc group and our staff. I just don't want you guys to stick your neck out too far on some issue, and then all of a sudden, there's acrimony, and then we get in trouble for participating but not asking.
Yeah.
If people don't offer their comments, fine, they had their opportunity, and they have nothing to complain about based on our participation.
Well, to that end, Jeff, I think you could also say the same thing, that people, municipality and municipalities could reach out to their legislative representatives and push the project, and kind of bypass Charlie in a way, you know, so there's, there's, there's many ways to look at it, but...
That's, they, they can do that, Dan, but we should not assume that they are doing that.
No, no.
This is what we do.
And the other thing to keep in mind, too, we have, and, and, and we do, we welcome input on any of the, of the, the talking points or whatever that we've, we've sent around, but the themes that we're hitting on are, we stay away from ones where there's, there is a potential for a real disagreement amongst our member municipalities. We try to take a county-wide...
I'm not, I'm not suggesting you are, but this should be circulated, okay? That kind of thing.
Right, and I'm just letting people know that we're not seeking out...
That's why you guys are on that committee.
Really fine points that one municipality might like and another doesn't, so, and again, any input people have, let us know.
Yeah, it would really be helpful, and we're kind of at a good time, like right, right now, in this next week or so, just because of Town Meeting Day, they're going to take a break, and, you know, they're trying to do crossover, so...
And then the Senate's going to throw out everything else.
Start from scratch.
That's fine.
And there is some conversation like that going on down there.
But that's, that's what happened. Everybody knows that.
But this is, this is actually a good time, because I think there is no more testimony that's worthwhile doing in the House right now, so there won't be any testimony probably for another week or two, so this is a good time. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind helping, you know, give your sensibilities on this, and, you know, your select board, or trustees, or city council, I will, I'll do an email.
Well, the best way to get the attention of the legislative bodies is at the city president, or the...
Yeah.
Or the town manager, or the town administrator.
I'll do both.
Or the, in some cases, you can only, you know, hit Garrett.
Chair and the, and the chief staff. So I'll do that, and as Chris said, you know, hopefully there isn't anything in here that's really surprises you in terms of things that we haven't talked about before. You know, there's kind of the push for smart growth, resource protection, there is, you know, a little notion, we talked a lot about resource protection when we were doing the energy planning maps, like where is, do we want to prevent anything from getting built? So we're kind of suggesting, hey, you should use some of the work that all the RPCs did for you. And, you know, so you see those, those themes kind of hit on repeatedly, and then, then there's some process things, as Chris noted, some of the process things, we start to get a little softer, like, you know, not as, not as passionate about those things. So any feedback, welcome, and take any feedback going forward. Really appreciate it.
Okay. Now we can move on to Executive Directors Report.
Yeah, so first thing, I want to introduce Taylor. Taylor is our new senior planner.
Taylor, I tried to have him introduce you early on, but he said, "No, no." He said, "Sit through."
Make it wait through the whole evening.
Feel it, we're sharing with it. So, so you may remember Emily left us to do something in DC, some crazy thing, in Leahy's office, so I think she's in, had an email, she said it was interesting, I think was the word she... And so we could not really have asked for a more ideal situation, just kind of sliding in. He's on day two, but he's already, his, you know, desk is full.
Yeah, hoping the transition is smooth. I did very similar work in Northwest the past six years, I was town planner in CA and Gilson before that for about three years, so, from my ocean, grew up in Colchester, so happy to be working down here.
Well, welcome. Yeah.
Wait, but is somebody else for the building?
Oh, I know.
Yeah, there's that.
We only, we only overlapped for three months, so it wasn't a lot of them.
Different experiences.
Deep state.
The deep state.
Yeah, that's a, so I guess, just in terms of other legislative updates, there are, there's a number of bills that have potential implications, even specifically for RPCs, but the ones that are probably most important for Chinney County and our towns, there's one, the housing bill, that I need to start paying a little bit more attention to. There's quite a bit of suggestions in there for municipal planning and zoning. Amendment is trying to make it easier for individuals to, you know, add housing units. So there's some debate on that one. The global warming bill, you know, has some things in there that we may want to pay attention to, too. I have not really digested that one very much at all, and I'm trying to think of the other ones. There's a, there's a couple in GovOps, I think in the Senate, which I'm not, well, I don't have a strong belief that they're moving too far, but they would have us doing like public safety plans for municipalities, all the RPCs doing public safety plans, and or getting much more involved in public health or, or safety issues. So I, I don't think those are moving too far, but there, there are a couple bills where they're trying to increase either the breadth or depth of work that we're doing.
Are the affordable housing bills still concentrating on supply-side solutions and forgetting the middle, like we've cautioned them not to do, or what?
The housing bill, I think, I think, and a lot of it was stuff that the administration worked on, you know, in the off-season, I think with a specific end goal of trying to address the missing middle more.
Which is in our plan for those that don't remember it.
Yeah, so, right, we were kind of talking about the full spectrum for sure. And so it is a little more, and like I said, they were actually trying to provide, make it easier for the private sector to solve some of the issue, or even homeowners to add a second unit on their property, you know, which then becomes kind of controversial as, is that really the state with a heavy hand kind of saying, you know what, there is no more single-family zoning.
Right.
Everybody can do two units. Go out, right, which is kind of an interesting thing to think about, but also, I think, for some residents and neighbors, also a scary thing.
Is in Oregon, are you doing that?
There are, yeah, there are some jurisdictions that have moved in this direction, which is where, where the idea came from.
Maybe Portland, I think.
Yep, we have some, Minneapolis is working on this. And I think there is one state, I think you're right, that does, has basically outlawed single-family zoning. And, you know, there's some good history as to why they might do that, and it does, Jeff, go to the point of, you know, the missing middle, it's not permanently affordable, you know, subsidized housing. So anyway, that's, let me know if, are there any other bills that have crossed your radars that are of concern, that we should be paying attention to? Good, thank you. And then just a note on the UPWP, we had our second meeting this afternoon, just before this. Thank you, Chair Catherine. And a few others, Erin, Barbara, who else is on that? And John, oh, Jackie, yeah. Okay. And, I'm sorry, Amy.
Whoever was here at 5:25.
Yeah, right, right. Whoever had food before the meeting. But, but the board's well represented on that committee. And so I think we're getting closer to, you know, sorting out, we got a good number of applications, you know, one, maybe closer to 1.5 million asked, we're getting, trying to get that down to one and a quarter or so. So I think we're, we're getting close, and we'll finish that up, well, in March, so, and that will be on your agenda in April. That's good for me.
Okay. Committee and liaison activities and reports are in your packet. Is there any questions on those? Members' items, other business?
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Chris seconded. All in favor?
Oh, I think...
Closed. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Huh?
Good meeting.
7:50.
Not bad.